I know that we go into call sections 16.3 and 21, 1, 2, 3, and 13. R S M.
All right. The call from the reception. The recess opens towards the close. We zoom to 6.10, 0.21, sections 1, 2, 3, and 13 of the reserve device. Reserve is section. It's Cohen. J O N. Going into close today. Ms. Kager. Down for yes. Hold on, you guys. Ms. Carr. What's coming in this part?
Oh, yes.
All right. Five zero. Going into close. All right, the key to you there. You have me. And I like this.
This is true.
Yeah.
I'm going to go on more. And then I have a special thing. That's fine. How does it go?
I'm sorry.
... We had a wicked drive at uh seventy miles an hour over the east of the city. We have a home to enjoy here in France on this earth there looking beautiful, both trees red and our skyline. Happy to be right now at forty one and I'm very accomplished and I'm a little bit excited for now that both you and I are more childhooders. And just a little bit of rain from some of us and we're tomorrow. And you know that you have the project of the Colorado, the first one in there, so no point one for Alaska, thirty two hundred degrees right now. And nobody's gonna come or for your pride, because those trust teams, they don't, you know, everybody calls them really worth it. I can go back to the first one again, I thought so, which is important because this one spring and Friday, we have a few of the people up there saying, okay, for tomorrow. And this is cloud, this is western, the rain as well, when rain survives, it's probably sky, but I can sort of protect the earth by attacking. But you know, these cities are divided by, and also the south of ice country, south of the United States and just a little bit of rain to bring the heat in tomorrow. This is the newest study, something that was just pulled back by four backpacks, we'll be keeping an eye on each shower moving their way into our Georgia. For your Friday against the weather, and just a part of the south of the country. I think the bigger story weather wise here for the next two days.
Mm. V.
Yeah, I think every time.
No, he was active.
Alright, we are back in the open session called Becky's Order at 6:49. We're at 3.0 applause applause.
Right, thank you, uh, Hudson, Allison to the PD, uh, Director Wallow.
Good evening, directors. Excuse me. Tonight, we are recognizing Drake Davis, a fifth grade student at Urban Elementary School as our December Applause Applause Awardee. Drake is an outstanding student, he is well-liked by his peers and is a leader in fifth grade and across the entire school community. He speaks up for students who may not have a strong voice. He believes all students should be able to identify with their true selves and have the comfort knowing that school is a safe place for all. Drake recently graduated from the DARE program. And for the graduation, he wrote a beautiful essay about his future goals and how to handle peer pressure. Congratulations to Drake. And I know his principal, Ms. Blencardi, is on as well as his teacher and some other urban staff. I'm going to ask Drake I'm going to ask Drake to unmute so we can say hello and congratulate him.
Go ahead and say hello, Drake.
Hello, Drake. Oh, there you are. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. You are a wonderful student and we have a certificate headed your way. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I am going to turn it over to Ms. Rowe for Above and Beyond.
Okay, Ms. Rowe, take it away.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. Before we get too into the presentation, I wanted to take a minute to thank our parents and family members who took the time to come and support their students in this presentation. I know that you're anxiously awaiting the Chiefs game, so very much appreciate you being here and supporting them. Thank you very much. I have the pleasure of introducing our CORE program students. CORE stands for Creating Opportunities for Ruskin Eagles. They have been working on three very important real-world projects this semester. I will not steal their thunder. I am going to turn it over to them to share with you what they've been working on for Superintendent Obeng. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marisa and this is the HMC One Branding Districts Project. As Ms. Rowe said, CORE stands for Creating Opportunities for Ruskin Eagles. We are first-years pilot. We are all juniors and seniors. This is who we are. We are learning to think critical, critically communicate effectively, analyze and interpret data, engage in collaborations, research process, personal responsibility and learn, speaking and learning. This here is a collaboration of all the project shifts that we've been on. And here is some of our first projects we've accomplished in CORE. And now I will be passing it off to Bianca.
Good afternoon. First, I just want to say thank you for allowing us the chance to present to you. We want to say thank you for giving us your time and presenting this today. Today, we are here because Superintendent Obeng had challenged us with a task. The task was rebranding the HMC One School District. And we came up with two solutions for this. The first solution was a mentorship project with our older youth mentoring the younger youth. We believe that that can give a very positive light to the situations that are happening today. The second solution that we came up with, with a social media and podcast rebranding, where we find and collect data that's going around in the HMC One School District and bringing it together and showcasing everything that has been done. I will now share a little bit of my, pass it on to Janelle to give you a little information about the mentorship project.
I'm Janelle. And, oh, us as CORE decided to do the mentoring program to help the younger, to help guide the younger youth for a real-world reality. We recently spoke with former principals and they gave best feedback stating that they thought that our ideas were good and that we should put our actions into play. So us as CORE decided that on February fourteenth, we wanted to send out permission slips and informational slips out to the staff at the schools. And I'm gonna pass it on to Shyla, she's gonna give you information about the permission slips.
Hi, my name is Shyla Turner. I'll be explaining the permission slip process and why it would benefit our program. We would send the slips out to the schools for the staff to send off to the kids' parents they feel would basically no need the program. We want permission from parents for them to understand all the child would be benefiting from the program. How benefits use is helping them prepare for their high school reality they would be going into. Also, we want a safe space for students to open up and feel comfortable knowing there are other students who care. Now, I'm gonna pass on some more.
So that was a little bit about the mentorship project. Now, we would love to go on to the social media project. I will be handing off to Kahari.
Hi, my name is Kahari. Today, I'll be talking about the social media and podcast side of things. We know that social media is a big impact on our community, on our community, and that our podcasts will bring a positive light on our brand. We all know me, my peers and I, how it feels to go somewhere and somebody slanders our school. We are launching our project February twenty-fourth. We decided this after meeting with teachers and staff in the Hickman Mills District, and they stated that we should start as soon as possible. I'll be passing it on to, passing it on to Aze to show you the details and facts on our podcast.
Hi, my name is Aze. And today, I'll be informing you all on our facts and incentives and recognition of our podcast. Our fir-, our first podcast will feature the Heart of Kansas City Ms. Marva. After all the facts, our upcoming podcast and daily conversations will be about school spirit, sports, and academic news. We will invite anyone our, on our show that requests to join us. We know this will help us, help bring a, bring a positive outlet. And I'll be passing it on to Amira to get feedback, to see, inform this.
So, hi, my name's Amira. So basically, when we talked with you guys last, you gave us feedback about, you know, small questions regarding our mentorship and our podcast. One of them was, you know, our launch day for our podcast, which is going to be February twenty-second. We'd be covering all social media platforms for, for students run by students. And we'd send out constant press releases written by us to news stations to highlight all the positives that HMC One has to offer. For our mentorship program, we were asked if we were going to let elementary kids get on this too. And we will in the future. We plan to have Ruskin High School students also help out with this mentorship program and keeping it school-wide so that they can also help not only with the sixth and seventh graders as well as just elementary kids. But right now, we, our pilot group would stay with eighth graders transitioning into high school. So I'll pass it to Donald.
Hi, my name is Donald, and I would like to thank you all for taking your time and to sit down and listen to what we have to say about changing our brand and image and helping our school become better in the future.
We want to give a special thank you for, to Mr. Obeng for entrusting us with this project. We would love to give thanks to Ms. Michael, I know she's watching, to Mr. Beatty and Mrs. Katie Rowe. We would love to give thanks and to the people who came out and gave us feedback and help with this, such as Dr. Riderson and Mrs. Marva and a lot of more people. We thank you for your time and we would love any questions or feedback to help better our school in this project that we came up with.
Don't go away, don't go away. I know the board members would have some comments for you or some questions. And so we're gonna give them an opportunity to, to, we'll start from my right, I know, Mr. Coleman. She's also a student, she's a teacher as well, so she knows what you're doing.
First of all, excuse me, I would like to commend you young people on your achievement and what you're, you're going to do. And I think it's an excellent way to put out to the community and other communities the good things that are happening with our students and by our students because it seems like all we hear is negative. And I think this is an excellent, excellent way to put out there the good things, the positive things that you guys are doing, and I commend you.
Thank you.
We'll give the president the last word, we'll start at the end of the Miss Graves, maybe?
I want to say that I really appreciate how you articulated what you are going to do. All of you all spoke very, very well. You were able to hold our attention. And I think that's so important because sometimes students get up, they know what they're gonna say, but they don't articulate it. And we don't understand what they're, what they're trying to say. But every last one of you all articulated very, very well. And I'm very proud of you and willing to do whatever I can to support you, whether it's monetary, prayer, whatever, just please let me know.
I want an invitation to come on the podcast.
So whoever did spoke, just come and introduce yourselves.
Just here.
Hi, I'm Bernadette. I have that in the social media.
My name is Denise. My name is Denise.
As you step to the mic, you go on camera, you all get credit for this. I understand that some of y'all feel a lot more comfortable speaking in front of people, some of y'all don't. But the thing is that I want to make sure that I honor you by making sure that everyone can recognize the work that you've done. There's one thing for it to be, you know, that you're from Ruskin, you're from Berkeley, from somewhere, or from Hickman. And, and, and there's an image that people have about, about this place and us. But every time I see the people who actually do show up, they're the ones, they're the hard workers, they're the ones who actually put in the work. And people don't get to see that. So I want to make sure that every last one of you is seen. That's the reason why I made sure y'all stepped up to the mic. I appreciate y'all for coming and presenting. That's, this is amazing. I, I would like to thank the superintendent for kind of giving you guys the initiative, but I, I value your work and I look forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
What everyone stated here that I am so impressed with you guys. I see future board members up there, future school board members, future council people, politicians. So keep up the good work. Encourage others to join, encourage your friends to join, get your parents involved. Reach out to the board members. I'll be happy to join your podcast as well, along with Mrs. Coleman. I'll, I'll be happy to assist you guys in any way I can. I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to let you guys know really how special you are. Simply because Ms. Womble, she really protects the Hickman Mills brand. And for her to trust you guys to such a project, I mean, it's amazing. I mean, she, she must really have super great confidence because she doesn't let us, any of us board members, anything, nothing. We have to clear everything through her. So this is really a, a really special program. And you guys, you know, Ms. Graves spoke, you know, you spoke very well. When I was in high school, I could not come up in front of anybody that's speaking. Had this ability, you guys have, even the shyest ones, I couldn't. I, I just couldn't do it. So I want to commend you guys, your, your heads and tails probably way beyond any of us at your age. And you're doing a great job and I look forward to seeing some of the evolution of this whole project.
Thank you.
Alright, I'd like to give my public thank you to you guys. So first of all, let me say that thank you for coming on the Last Day of School.
Yeah.
And I wanted people to see you here because I do believe that you represent the core of our students, right? In terms of that. And when I gave you that challenge, I had hope and aspirations that you would pick up and kind of take it to the next level, right? And that's the expectation, that's the model that hopefully you're setting for your peers. And what board members and team members all know that this program, this CORE program is new. This is the inaugural class twenty twenty-one, the first group. So we're gonna take a picture of you. And twenty years from now, when there are other groups going on doing all kinds of things, they're gonna look back and go, look at those old bullies from back then. So thank you so much for shaking up the challenge and we look forward to your progress. And so one reason why they're here, they're here to accept the Above and Beyond Award for this month. So given award each month and usually it's like an individual, but this was such a great collective group that I thought it'd be worthy to share that with not just board members, but to the broader community. And they did receive visas for their contributions. And I know I did miss one particular person there, so I've got a card here for you, Amira. Anybody else that I missed?
Me right here. I broke mine.
Alright, so thank you and we look forward to seeing you in the new year when you continue to move forward. And Ms. Womble hasn't signed off on your, yeah, so they gotta still do some more work before we get the seal of approval, but we'll get there. Alright, thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you.
Board, thank you very much for your support of awesome programs like this. It gives us the opportunity to expand to our students, so thank you.
Because I really love the fact that, I, I don't know, people on camera can't see, but we have parents in here. Now, I know that as soon as we're done here, you're probably gonna think we're not listening to the rest of whatever we talk about. But I really appreciate the fact that you guys came and you supported your kids. That, that, I wasn't even saying their names because you gave it to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mom.
Thank y'all.
You have a blessed New Year.
We have no audience comments, so we're gonna go on to five more superintendent comments. Thank you, President Townsend. My comments this evening will be great, but they are, I think, appropriate for the season. It is the holiday season and there are a lot of, many of our staff are doing all kinds of wonderful things for our students and the community. And I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize, recognize one of our staff, who happened to be Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus today. At Urban School, Shinika and Byron Smith. And Shinika is a, we call it a self-family school, he is on personnel with us. And they've done this, I don't know how many years, but it's a regular event that happens that they spend time dressing up as Santa Claus and treating our kids. And we wanted to kind of recognize them publicly. I don't know if you can see that, can we see that? Can we see that?
Yeah, they can, obviously.
Here's a photo, photo from this morning. And just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all our staff and what they do. And also to thank our parents who've been patient with us throughout this COVID pandemic challenge. And looking forward to a great new year with everyone. So I'll leave that to say season greetings, because there's all kinds of holidays throughout this period. And looking forward to seeing everyone coming back the rest of the year. That is the end of my comments. That is uh the end of my my comments. Oh, I do have one other comment. Invite some assistance from uh Ms. Wambu to recognize our board um for the work we do. And people don't know that boards are elected, but we are volunteers. You can get no monetary compensation for doing this. Some people will think, why do you do that? But we know why you do that. You saw that today. Those faces that came in here, those two, that's why we do it. So we get back to that. So we want to recognize the board um with the point, can I get help? Somebody the back P L T members, we could place the uh one set up there for the board. Somebody take it out of the cameras so we can see it with them. Coleman. That's okay. We can put them behind us. Thompson, there we go.
Thank you.
Hendrick. I can't say this. Thank you, President Thompson. That's the end of uh my comments.
All right, auditor.
Good evening, Board. Um I am going to introduce our auditor, Brian Akoff. He works with Westbrook, and they've been doing our audit for probably the last 10 years now. So I will turn the mic over to him and let him go through our audit.
Do you like me to share the slides?
Yeah, are they on here? Do you have them?
I have it.
Okay.
You just need to unshare and I'll share.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Brian Akoff with Westbrook and Company. We're going to do a brief overview of the financial statements um and the audit. Uh and then we will uh go over any questions if you have any. So on the next slide, you will see the opinion paragraph. Um it's at the top of page two. You'll see that the financial statements were presented fairly. So this is a clean audit opinion or a good audit report. So exactly what you want to see in your financial statements. The next slide is going to be the statement of activities. This is a kind of a different financial statement because it has your expenditures down the left-hand side, offset with revenues through the middle. Um we usually highlight food service and community services. However, uh with everyone um switching the way food service is funded this year, it's actually funded through a community service function. So if you try and compare this financial statement to last year's financial statement, it will look nothing like last year's because all of your food service revenues are basically coming through a community service function for the most part. So uh the next slide will be your balance sheet. You can see as of June 30th, there were 63 million in assets between the three funds. Your special revenue fund is your teachers' fund. That's for salaries and benefits and standard procedure for school districts is take that to a zero balance at the end of the year. At the bottom of that screen, you can see the fund balances. The next slide will show you the allocation of those fund balances. Your general fund had about 28,000 that is for the current education consortium. Those are restricted by outside sources. The student activities, that's your clubs and organizations, 257,000. Uh you guys have had some increases in food service over the year. So DESI requires you to track your food service balance so that you will spend it on future food service expenditures. That's about 2.5 million. And then the remaining balance in your general fund is always unassigned. It's 28 million. The debt service fund is always restricted by outside sources, so it is restricted for debt service. Capital projects, you had a bond proceeds um that had not been utilized by the end of the year of 28 million. And then the remaining balance in the capital projects fund of $3,900 is always for future capital projects. The next slide will be the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Uh you can see down towards the bottom, increase this year of almost 49 million in in your total fund balance. Mainly due to the issuance of the bond. Uh if you look just above that, you can see that you guys issued the bond. Uh it was about 34, 35 million dollars. So um did have an increase overall. If you look outside the bond, a lot of that was due to the increase, due to the funding from the COVID situation, and we'll kind of go through that here in a minute. The next slide is going to show you your tax abatements. Uh we won't go into whether they're good or bad. I'll just let you know that during the year, tax abatements uh decrease your revenues by about 2.5 million. The next slide should summarize your debt for the year. Um as of June 30th, you can see that we had about 80 million in in debt for the year with about 4.7 due this current year. So the next two slides will show you those payments. No balloon payments or anything like that. So the first slide will be your lease certificates of participation. Standard annual payments all the way through 2036. And then the next slide is actually going to be the bonds. And they are standard payments through 2040. All right, the next slide is going to be a five-year comparison of revenues. And if you look the fourth chart, the fourth graph over to the right, you can see the federal revenues, significant increase in increase in federal revenues. Your federal revenues actually increased by 9.2 million dollars this year. Um that was due to the additional COVID coronavirus relief fund. Basically, federal government was was sending out money to districts. It basically caused us to have to audit additional federal programs this year. So um also was a big driver on the increase in your fund balance as of the end of the year. The next slide will be your five-year comparison of expenditures. Um overall, you can see um expenditures remained proportionately about the same. Your salaries and benefits did go up slightly. Um however, the reason it looks like it went up is actually because you had a decrease in your purchase services. Um so if you actually look at the amount of salaries and benefits that actually were paid, the amount actually decreased from the prior year, even though when it looks at the entire budget as a whole, as a percentage of it, it actually increased. So um kind of a a difference situation there. The next slide will be a five-year comparison of reserve ratio and average daily attendance. Uh top chart, you can see your reserve ratio has um spiked up this year. Um all the way up to about 45%, I believe. Uh that is due to those federal funds coming through. And then the bottom chart is your average daily attendance. Uh we've had a steady decrease in average daily attendance for the last five years. So definitely something you want to keep an eye on, monitor going forward. And given that a lot of your revenues are driven off of attendance-based numbers, um something to keep an eye on so that we can adjust the budget as needed. Uh while we're here, we look at state statutes, compliance with laws, regulations. If we determine anything that's a violation, we bring it to your attention. And on this slide, you can see that it says they are fairly stated. So this is another clean opinion. However, we did note one instance that was a immaterial instance where we had to make a change. And on the next slide, you'll see that. And it was that your transportation department, uh your transportation vendor did not provide ridership for your spring ridership. Um so this is the recommendation that you uh reach out to them and get the get the information for ridership. You're supposed to report ridership twice a year. So um that information was not reported last year. Uh the next slide will be internal controls. While we're here, we look at internal controls. Uh we don't give an opinion on internal controls, but if we see anything while we're looking at it, we bring it to your attention. And you can see that we did not identify any deficiencies. Uh the next slide, you are a federal program audit, uniform guidance audit, because you have over $750,000 of federal expenditures. And if you see at the very bottom of the page, this is another clean opinion where it says we did not identify any deficiencies. The next slide will summarize the federal program side of the audit. Um you can see unmodified is listed twice. Uh that's that's a clean opinion or a good audit report. So exactly what you want to see. And then no is checked all the way down. And then you can see down towards the bottom, we audited three different federal programs. Normally, we only have to audit two. So it's child nutrition cluster, the coronavirus relief fund, and the education stabilization fund. So that is where we spent the majority of our time during the federal program audit. And then at the very bottom of that slide, you can see that it says you don't qualify as a low risk. That's because uniform guidance was written for accrual basis financial statements, not cash basis financial statements. 99% of school districts in the state of Missouri are cash basis. Uh just know that we will always have to audit a higher percentage of your federal programs. Do not change to accrual basis financial statements, stay cash basis. We'll just continue to audit a higher percentage. And the last slide will show that there were no federal findings, no federal comments. So the two nuns means a a clean opinion. So overall, a a clean audit, a good audit opinion, uh financially stable, sound district. So just continue to monitor the average daily attendance going forward. Uh with that steady decrease, we got to make sure we're ahead of the game if that continues to decrease.
Questions from the board? Comments? Same. Let me take the opportunity to thank uh first of all, Mr. Akoff and his team. You know, when you come to the audit, it's been at least a week that we can have going through our books and everything. And we do much appreciate it because it does give us an opportunity to find uh efficiencies, efficiencies, and we've seen a steady improvement over the last few years. And I expect we'll have improvement for next year as well. And lastly, I want to thank uh Director Wiltie and her team in terms of the work managing our our funds and making sure that we're compliant around all the different pieces as well as our staff and our schools and our team and that. So thank you, uh Ms. Wiltie and Mr. Akoff for
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
So we will approve. Right. So we'll approve all that as the financial updates with the audit.
No, you want, can you do a recommendation for the audit then? You want the board to approve the audit?
Yes, please.
Yes, Director. I'd like to move to approve uh the audit report that was just presented. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the audit report presented to be approved. Is there any discussion?
Can I get you just to um what's the proper date we should have on that report? June 30th, 2021?
Yes, it's the audit as of June 30th, 2021.
Who's the audit uh report was presented for June 30th, 2021?
I'll remind you that this president, I know that we approved the audit.
June 30th, 2021.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Except the audit for June.
As of June 30th, 2021.
Is there any discussion? One day. Uh all right, well, thank uh the I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank you, Charlie, as well um for transparency that this audit produced. I think that is why that with us having transparency, we can be able to share up our finances as we have the highest fund balance right now that we've ever been in. That we need to kind of hold, hold it for and be able to provide good education. I appreciate that. You and your staff.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anyone not in favor of approving? All right. Same now is approved by unanimous consent. Bond update. We have a bond update.
We need to do that.
The next thing is the financial update. Financial update. The December financial update. You haven't received any documents. I'll show you. Can you see these?
Uh, yep. Do you?
Can you open that?
I'd want the budget variance report.
Which one is it?
The very first link, the blue budget variance report. All right. I'll try to read this. So So this is the budget variance report as of the end of November uh 2021. And you'll see we're in green with our revenues. We're right on target to where we need to be, especially with the local. And the county always comes in at the end of the year. State is good. And then federal, that includes the S R three. So we will be invoicing and bringing those funds in throughout the year. If you scroll down just a little bit to the expenditures, which are still in green as well. And you'll see, of course, the majority of ours is done in salary and benefits. All right. And if we can get out of this one, and I just want to go to the fund balance report. It should have been the last link, I think, in that section. The fund balance report should be the very last one, I believe, in that. Yes, there we are. So you'll see we ended November at a 54.64% fund balance projected for the end of the year. So that's really what I wanted to share on the financial reports, just that 54.64. And does anyone have any questions for me regarding the financials as of November 30th?
You have to just do the recommendation and they can have discussion for questions.
Sure. Um but did you want me to also, I still need to go through the bills to be approved. The bills to be approved as of November are out there as well, as well as the contracts to be approved. There were no additional contracts for December on the report. So um the superintendent recommends approval of the November 30th um budget variance reports along with the November bills to be approved and the December contract list. The financial updates.
Financial update for uh December.
I have a second. It's been moved and seconded to be set in December 20, December 2021 financial report presented. Is there any discussion?
Excellent job. Excellent job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, is anyone not in favor of accepting the report as presented? Same now that's uh approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Board. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Season's greetings, Board Directors and Superintendent O'Bang. I have the pleasure of introducing or reintroducing Mr. Marquis Canyon of Universal Construction to give us a bond update on our um construction projects happening at our schools.
I can stop sharing for somebody else. Mr. Canyon, do you share your document?
I will try to do that.
We need to do a better job having this presentation loaded and ready like this. A month in the world that we're waiting.
Can you see that? Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, nothing's changed here, uh, except for we've installed about $2 million more dollars in, in work currently. So we're still tracking, as of today, um, that we're still on track for the GMP. MBE WB participation here, uh, nothing's changed. I will get, we're still utilizing the minority, uh, dumpster service, which is the only one that we found. And so I did promise the board that I would get you that total dollar amount. Have not done that yet, uh, we're still using them. And so that price continues to increase because we, we've used them the entire project. In totality here, we're still right at around 31% in participation. No one's falling off. Uh, all of the companies have, have performed on the job, so that's been exciting. A lot of times in the industry, it's lowest, most responsive, most responsible bidder. And, um, Kikman was able to get, you know, 31%, and they're all responsible and financially stable. And they have the capacity to be a project, so that's, I'm, I'm super excited about that. As far as construction, uh, this looks different. I actually did the slide about a week and a half ago, I guess, at this point. And so today, at Ruskin, we, we actually put the first course of base asphalt down on this parking lot, all of the curb work's done. So if you go by Ruskin High School and look at that northeast parking lot, it's actually gonna look like a parking lot, which has been much awaited going through this process. We're here inside a theater, we've gotten much more work done. At this point, um, all of the drywall is up now. We are actually taping it and getting ready to, to get the wood paneling and, and all of that stuff installed. So we're moving, we're moving along pretty well in that area. As far as the cafe is concerned, we are going back, we've gotten it painted. We turned it over, um, but we didn't know that the health department, health department would not allow the district to utilize it. So we've continued to work in there, material has come in, um, and we've gotten that fixed. It, it had a lot to do with the ceiling being unfinished is why they wouldn't do that. So we didn't, we didn't know that, we gave for it, but now we're, we're moving and working there. So it'll be ready when it comes off of, of winter break for the school to actually use. Here's a look at Burke. As of yesterday, we've actually installed the storefront glass systems there. So as soon as we get the remaining material, which we're expecting any day, we're gonna take down the wood and we'll be able to have a, a regular, uh, entry there. Dobbs. So at Dobbs, we achieved a temporary certificate of occupancy. There are a couple of things that we have to do there still, um, as it relates to, you know, the secure entry and the, the actual auto operators of the doors. But this space has been turned over to the district and I think it is, is being used currently. Ingalls. We actually ran into some issues here, so, um, the space is done. However, there is, the city, there's a fire alarm fault that, um, was unforeseen. So we're trying to figure out what's happening with that. Hopefully, we will have that resolved next week. The district has been really good about, uh, getting their standard fire alarm contractor out to work with us. And so there's a couple of issues that we need to resolve. And as soon as we're done with those issues, the city will approve that space and we can give it back. Look at Warford here. We did proceed, I think, when I did the, the board tour. I told the board members that were on that tour, we're gonna continue to work and do what we can in that space until that fire rated system shows up. So we're moving, um, we've gotten fire alarm in, we've got lights in, ceilings in. We've started painting there for those colors. So, um, we're continuing to touch that space with everything we can do that, for the material that we currently have. And finally, we were expecting the arrival of the gym equipment at Warford. For Burke and, or I'm sorry, gym equipment for Ruskin. But the fire rated glass and what's needed for Warford and Burke, we found out that that is supposed to ship to us. Um, and we were given a solid date of January 21st. That's coming from Seattle, so that's typically a seven to 10-day, uh, ship time from the trucking. So we are hoping that mid-February, we can give these spaces back as soon as that material arrives. Are there any questions for me?
Hope, hope you're clear this time.
Hey, thank you. You all have a, a happy holiday if I don't talk to you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Skin? Good evening. We have the second reading for the November policy recommendation. These policies did go to the Policies Committee at the beginning of this month. There are only five policies for consideration. I will let, um, President Townsend take over since she's the chair of that Policy Committee at this time. Okay, well, I, we, we, we have the five policies that we reviewed. There was one that the Policy Committee had some concern about, which has been amended to which the policy, uh, wanted. It was a policy GCPB. That was the one that had some, um, discussion. And the discussion was that currently our practice is on June 1st. If a teacher breaks their contract, it is a penalty of $1,500. And on July 1st, it moves to $3,000. This proposal is starting in June of next year. It will be a flat rate, starting on June 1st at $5,000.
Can I just comment on that? I would recommend to the board, I wasn't, I wasn't there for the conversation, but, you know, surrounding districts are 10,000. They hold a pretty high threshold. I think we need to raise the bar. When we contracted people to work with us and then they leave at an inopportune time, then we're scrambling to, um, get personnel. So I would recommend that we go at least to the same limit as our surrounding districts. So anywhere between eight to 10,000 would be, I think, most appropriate. I want the board to consider that. These are people who, who've signed a contract, they say they want to be with us, and then at the last minute, they say no. Then that means just before school, students come in, our principals are scrambling to try to find staff and no one else is available. So, um, other teachers have to break their contract in order for us to hire them. So I, I, I would appreciate a higher, um, threshold for, for our staff to work with to ensure that we keep, um, staff on contract. My recommendation would be anywhere between eight to 10,000.
Okay, um, we did discuss, we did discuss this in the Policy Committee, uh, quite early.
Mr. President? Right, I was gonna, I was gonna comment. So, uh, I know that we did have discussion in some of the, and I think just, I think if I can get some context, if being a part of that community, getting some context, uh, getting that context from the superintendent providing, what kind of bind it puts, uh, the administration in. And I would even ask, like, because both me and Mr. Ray's kind of, kind of thought about the aspect of that being top heavy for someone. And, and, but I, I think we needed the contextual aspect of how, what position it would put this, the administration in. But, um, I'm gonna leave my comments there. Can I, can I just add another, just that you can have discussion? The other piece to that is that we do provide waivers. So when, since somebody has a, a circumstance, whether it's illness or family or, then we bring a floor to the board and say, we want to not, um, have this person pay that fee because of their circumstance. And the board has done that in the past, offered waivers. So there is that contingency, right? So it's not a straight, you're just gonna say no to everybody. But, you know, when there's sensitivities around it, we do apply that. And I think our staff has done a pretty good job of being sensitive to, uh, personal needs in those type of situations. The board has that liberty. So consider that in your conversation as well, too.
President?
Go ahead.
I would like to, uh, meet, meet him in the middle, I would say. And I, I guess my concern is where we, you know, where would, where would they get the 10,000 unless you pulled it from their retirement or something like that? But I mean, and I know other districts are high, but I would just like to say if you want to do it, I mean, I would go with eight. That would be agreeable to the superintendent, eight. Isn't that agreeable, or do you still want to go to 10?
No, I, I could accept that. I understand that, you know, you, you've got a great heart, Ms. Grace, and you're a teacher, so you understand. The other, the other pieces. Eight would be, would be, uh, acceptable to us to, to start moving the client. But, you know, one of the things, you do want to set a standard that, you know, when we hire people, we put them in a contract. We expect them to fulfill that contract and we're gonna pay them for that time. So if someone's leaving, that means they're leaving for, um, a, a, an opportunity that's gonna give them greater compensation. Those who leave for, like, illnesses or other things, then we give them a waiver. So we're not insensitive, uh, uh, in that nature. So, um, I will go to take your eight, I would love to get the 10, but, uh, it's the holiday season and, uh, if you're offering eight, I would, I would take eight.
Mr. President?
Yes?
When it comes to this particular policy, can you read the policy number for me? Dr. Skin, you got that?
Yes. It is policy GCPB.
When it comes to the policy GCPB, I would like to make a note that we, uh, amended the number of, that is associated with the 5,000 and to bump that to 8,000.
It's been moved and seconded, we amend the policy of G.
C P B. GCPB.
And strike out 5,000 and insert 8,000. When we go on. Accept the policy. Is that correct? He's up into.
Yeah, that's correct.
So just take up that question first. Is there any discussion of the limit of policy? C, GCPB. Striking out 5,000 and adding 8,000. Same time. Is there anyone against? She's a champion. Same time, it's approved by unanimous consent. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration, board.
We have the second reading. It comes to second reading, um, the, uh, we are to our second reading, do you approve the rest of these policies?
Yes. Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the policies that were, the policies recommended from the Policy Committee.
Inclusive of this amendment?
Inclusive of this amendment. Thank you for finishing my sentence.
All right, all right. We moved, probably moved the second that we, uh, accept the policy recognition from, uh, from the Policy Committee with the amendments. Is there, uh, any discussion? Same time, is there anyone not in favor of accepting our policies? The Policy Committee's recommendation. Same time, it's approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you.
Take the docs, Skin?
Yes, case, uh, Mr. Quatmire, lobbyist?
Good evening, board. Um, just a quick update, uh, we, uh, posted the RFP for the lobbyist and that closed on December 10th. And we did not have any responses, um, submitted to the lobbyist RFP. It was, um, posted on our normal websites that we post all of the RFPs in addition to being advertised in the Kansas City Star for two Sundays, I believe, and didn't have any response to the request for proposal. Okay.
Is there any action from board on that?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded here, we, um, close out. Lobby's position and not seek administration. Or, yeah. All right.
Are you saying that we're done with that? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's, that's what she's, that's the question. That's the question. So, is there anything?
I don't think we should do that, I'm ready. Because we should go back to it, I don't know why, I don't know what, I'll take this. I've had to take protection city, or I don't know if it's COVID. I don't know, but I'm, can it be brought up again? Maybe not at this time, but in the future. I mean, I'm sure it could be brought up.
The question is, the question is, the question, the question in front of us is to close it out and not seek any more RFPs on it, that's the question. So if you want to seek, if you want to hold it open, may close it out and then try to revisit it, your vote will be no. If you want to close it out and not seek it, seek another, uh, opportunity, your vote will be yes. So is there?
So when it comes to this RFP, because if I remember correctly, this, this RFP would not just went out to the starting, you go out to, to the recommended places.
So, right, there was that one, the one recommended, I believe it was the Missouri Times with. Correct, and so we inquired, um, Barb, um, Barb inquired about that and they did not, they did not accept advertising related to that RFP. We did reach out to them and request it because we wanted to, um, based on the board's guidance and they did not accept advertising for RFPs. Yep.
There's two, there's two issues, uh, that is why I want to just say, one, we have the, we have, we have the lobbyists, we can operate them. But in the same aspect of putting out an RFP, um, uh, the, the concept of the policy is maybe for a late date. Maybe pose a better interest especially being from time period, maybe that's the case. Or maybe it's the fact that, um, that it's, it's not something that's, uh, heavily sought after. Basically, because of the fact that they, they have the Kansas City law. The one thing that I would be willing to do, it would be, would be to tailing or ending this issue currently, right now. It can be brought up again, I'm pretty sure it will be brought up again, probably within the following year. Brought up, again, I'm pretty sure it will be brought up again, probably within the following year. So even, so no matter on which way we vote, the, the, whether we vote the table or to, or to kill it. At any point, anybody can uh, re, re-munish that up. But as for right now, being the fact this year, we can best just to, to end it and let that. Go on to the next agenda, let's see what we have, go on to the next agenda or to, to the next year, we have an election season coming up. We would probably best, we're estimating to around there.
Say, any more discussion?
President, uh, President, may I, just um, an observation that may be um, for, for to consider. Um, I would, I would agree that it's um, it may be worthwhile to investigate having a lobbyist to represent our district. I think the timing was short. And the strategies were limited. Um, we could table this matter at this point and do some further research, and I would say we'd bring it back in April. And plan it for the next year, that way we can have a number of months to actually have the board do an RFP, interview appropriate candidates. And select someone to start at the beginning of the school year. I know that one of the challenges was to try to get it started for January. From the legislation that, legislature opens up, we're, we're gonna miss that both already. The um, the Superintendent Association does have a um, a lobbyist that we hired. And uh, I think if given some time, I could probably make some contacts and find out, you know, um, who among their colleagues or what. Might be interested in taking on some work with our district and then have the board have a formal process where they could. Interview different candidates and set some priorities around that.
Hmm.
So that would do, um, uh, board members might choose to think about it and prepare for it, and then we would still, I think it's worthwhile to investigate in this. Uh, I think it's an advantage for us, I think we need some advocacy to establish that uh, level. So that's just a consideration in terms of timeline, it's not like everyone's on the same wavelength.
Mister President, I'm willing to amend my motion to, to.
Since I did pay attention to class. And pardon me, Terry, considering class, your motion is to end. End the search, end the search for lobbyists until. Can't table, okay, can't table, just table it, play aside, pick crack up, at the end of this meeting.
Are you changing uh, Ms. Kendrick's motion?
Yeah.
So, I think Ms. Kendrick would have to withdraw her uh, motion in order for Mr. Townsend's motion.
It's just my understanding.
So you're interpreting.
So, Mister, Mister President, I wanna clarify what the President just said. He was saying that if you re-tabled the issue, then you would have to bring it up at the end of this meeting.
Right.
But the aspect of table, if she was to table it till whenever a superintendent or a human suspect, then it can go beyond this meeting. Go into the next year, so it's, it could, it's still be.
To be, to be, uh.
Just a clarification.
All right, boys.
I sent to the superintendent, on board, suspect.
Yeah, correct. All right, is there any other discussion? No further discussion, is there one, anyone against the motion? On this time, correct? Seven points. Make it seven point four, but just be. Yes.
Mister President.
Yes.
We need some clarification, I had a feeling to use into our board secretary regarding the uh. The adoption of agenda from the previous uh, minutes, last, last meeting. Where it stated that our board attorney seconded my motion. Uh, I thought that need to be uh, reworded or corrected.
Can you respond to that? Um, I think Ms. Kendrick is absolutely correct, and the uh, board, we can't have it on record, the board lawyer, uh, seconded the motion. So um, uh, the board secretary will um, um, review the tapes and finally book it uh, secondary. Unless there's someone here that probably was a secondary, they're gonna have to save it for some time. Okay, so then.
So we'll bring those.
So we'll bring it back. Bring it back. Thank you for catching me.
Each board agenda items.
This has to do with our travel policy. Just a more definite policy about how board members travel. Do you want me to just, just discuss it or? Okay, uh.
Just a brief.
No. Board members have been allowed to travel every year, some of the same board members. And I, I don't think that that's being fair. I think when, when we get new board members, they should be allowed. To have that opportunity to travel, and the other thing, uh, and. Other point is that the rest of us, or most of us, need to be going to the MSBA. It's very sad, when I go to these conferences, it's just one or two, when, when other districts, you know, at least five of their people are there. So um, every, every board member will have an opportunity to travel. But what has happened is some board members go every year, and I don't really think that's fair. So anyway, you know. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I did, that's my.
You, you, you wanna, you want to.
I wanted to bring that up in our policy, if the, if the board, if the board agrees.
So. So I uh.
What, what?
I understand what you're asking, you want the board to review the travel policy or. Or promote practical policy? Or do you want to send it to the committee, uh, policy?
I can send it to the committee, you can talk about that before, people sign, people hold on what they want to do.
Okay, so, so you're making recommendations.
For President, yes. I'm like, you had, um, policy D L C A to the Policy Committee for uh. For review. And to bring back uh, any recommendations for amendment suspension or otherwise uh, to the board.
I have a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, just a moment, second, standing policy D L C A. D L C A to the Policy Committee for review. Uh, is there any discussion?
There's no discussion, this is just a request, right?
Yes.
Mister President, I, I would uh, like to make a motion again. Regarding our April through September board minutes that have not yet been uh. Off to our agenda, this is my third request.
Is it a motion? Well, you know, we're, we're, the, the agenda item is future board agenda, it's future board agenda items, so. So board members have an opportunity to suggest items to the, there's no debate, there's no conversation. You have an item like that, you might get a knock for the superintendent, that could be something that is brought up without anything after. It's not really a debate, it's just a suggestion to the President to determine if it's a board item or committee item or something that could be brought in at any date. I have heard Ms. Kendrick uh, talk about the minutes, uh, we do have it on record, and we will follow up and ensure that we have uh, those months at a future meeting.
We go up the stretch. D L C A. We'll get it on.
Please.
All right. There's, is it, is it, okay, seeing no more? I'm not seeing no more, this, this meeting, this is done.
Good night, everybody.